Okay, welcome all and welcome to the meeting of the Pecosin City Council. This is Monday, March 23rd, just coming out of a work session where we talked about the capital improvements plan and had a quick meeting with Parks and Rec Advisory Board. If you could all please rise, I'll have the invocation lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the many blessings we've received in our city. We're well aware that that includes a recent accident involving our schools. We recognize how fortunate we are today that the injuries were non-life threatening. Tonight, we ask for a portion of your wisdom as we continue to deliberate the issues that we will see and that the plans that we make. Unless we never forget, we ask for a special blessing on those in our military, those that serve us in public safety every day, and for those families who support them in that endeavor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight on the agenda, we have two special presentations, and I like these. Always like to hear from folks about what's going on out in the world. We're going to start with Jeremy Jordan. And Jeremy, please come up and/or however you want to, whichever place you want to speak from. Sometimes we can get you on camera. Well, Bob's pretty good from right there.
Okay.
All right. I think Bob can handle it. And then Jeremy's going to talk to us about a volunteer sponsorship. He's the volunteer sponsorship chair for the American Heart Association. And Jeremy, the podium is all yours.
Great, thanks so much. Mayor Hunt, City Manager Wheeler, City Council. My name is Jeremy Jordan, longstanding resident of Pecosin. I appreciate the opportunity and your time this evening. What I wanted to touch on this evening is an event that's happening in our local community on April 25th with a 9:30 start date. And just a little bit about the Heart Association. Research shows that cardiovascular disease is our nation's number one killer, and it's largely preventable. Heart Chase supports the AHA's goal to reduce death from heart disease and by stroke by 20% per year until 2020, and also to improve the cardiovascular health of all individuals by 20% by the year 2020, so that more lives are saved and fewer Americans die from heart disease. Heart Chase is a new community fundraising game that supports the Heart Association. We held the event last year for the first time, and we're excited to bring it back to you this year. Heart Chase is very similar to a 5K run-walk, but instead of going for a run, teams use what's considered to be a Heart Chase application on any smartphone to download, find, and complete checkpoint challenges down and around Pecosin. The team with the most points after that 90-minute period will win a prize. Heart Chase Pecosin is the only event of its kind on the peninsula, and our goal this year is to raise over $20,000 for the American Heart Association. Last year, it was our kickoff event, and we raised $9,400 in our opening year. So Ryan Holloway, who's our director of the Heart Association, he tasked me with, which I think is reaching a pretty admirable goal, and to more than double the event from last year, and that's our goal. And it's the mission of the Heart Association to fight heart disease and stroke, the number one and number four causes of death here in Virginia. As you'll see here in a moment on a video that we're, about a two-minute video we'd like to show you, not only is this event incredibly fun, but it's engaging for everyone who participates. It's also a great hands-on opportunity to learn about the mission of the American Heart Association. Teams will compete a CPR checkpoint at the fire department and learn prevention at the Centerra checkpoint. The event is a great way to stay active and healthy and support a great mission. And we've been very fortunate this year to go out and reach out to the local schools, the primary school, the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. And we have a number of teams formed within the local schools that are going to be having teams on the 25th. We have been affected here locally through the passing of some recent teachers, which I'm sure all of you are aware of. So we hope that the event is going to be a fun way to honor some of those folks that have passed here recently. If we can show the video at this time, please. I'll need to click on something else. Just click on it.
There you go. Here you go.
the dunk booth, so we'll see how that happens.
But we'll all come to that.
You'll all come to that, won't you, Jamie?
That's for coaching and outside team.
Dr. Parrish has already mentioned that. So as you can see, that two-minute video kind of gave you a snapshot of what this event is all about. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Rachel Morrison, who's our volunteer for student recruitment chair at Pecosin High School.
Thank you.
Rachel, look forward to it.
Thank you, Jeremy, and the council for giving me this opportunity to share. Last year, my team won the first annual Heart Chase Pecosin. We had a blast, but more importantly, we raised money for the American Heart Association. In the past year, Pecosin High School has lost two faculty members to heart disease, which further motivates both students and teachers to make Heart Chase a success. Our goal this year is to have 75 teams. Many of those teams will be comprised of my fellow students as well as teachers. We want Heart Chase to be a great event for many years in Pecosin. We believe that it's a great way to honor the legacy of those faculty members and friends that our community has lost to heart disease. But to do this, we need your help. We ask that the city encourage staff and their families to register a team for the event. We also ask that the city council members join us in support of the American Heart Association by forming a team and encouraging others as well. Heart Chase Pecosin is on Saturday, April 25th at 9:30 a.m., starting at the Wells Fargo Field. For more information, please visit Heart Chase Pecosin on Facebook. And to register a team, go to heartchasepecosin.org. Anyone interested in volunteering for the event can contact the volunteer executive chair, Shannon Bergerson. Her phone number is 757-593-3592, and her email is S X T R O T T E at centerra.com. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rachel. And Jeremy and Rachel, I appreciate you all coming and speaking on behalf of this event. I heard nothing but great things from this last year, and I wanted to attend. So how many can be on a team, Rachel?
Five.
Five?
Two.
All right. I'll pick five of my most in-shave council members.
Somebody might have started working out.
That'll be the next council.
Dean, I didn't catch your date on that.
4/25, April 25th is what I got.
Who's in?
And so that sounds like a great time, and like I said, I heard nothing but great returns from that endeavor last year. I hope that you all raise your $20,000. I will be at the dunking booth to dunk the, what is it, Grafton Coach? Yeah, come on, son. But no, I look forward to it, and thank you all for coming here and speaking on behalf of that this evening. Thank you very much. Okay, the next speaker we have tonight is no stranger to us. It's Mr. Too Ritter from the Pecosin Business Alliance. And Too, now I guess you're now serving as the president of that alliance, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And no good job goes unpunished, so welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mayor Hunt, City Manager Wheeler, council members, thank you for having me here tonight. I am here representing the Pecosin Business Alliance, and we are working with the Peninsula Bicycling Association in planning a ride in Pecosin on April 18th, so it'll be another healthy weekend. But we're going to bring in 75 different riders from around the area to come and tour Pecosin. About a month ago, it was a Sunday, we had 70-reed day, and we had, on a Thursday, we just put something on Facebook, and we had 40 riders show up at Farm Fresh Parking Lot and toured Pecosin for about 25 miles. And there was a lot of people that said, "We didn't know Pecosin was here," much less all the beautiful scenery this year. So we kind of put our heads together and said, "This would be a great event to kind of put together formally and open it up to all the bicycle clubs here in the eastern Virginia area." So we're going to have a ride on April 18th, a maximum of 75 riders, and tour all the offroads, not off-road, but off the neighborhoods and everything, say, off the main roads for the most part. More details to come with that, but we're very excited about it. We're going to raise money for MS. The following weekend, they're having a tour-to-cure ride on the eastern shore for the multiple sclerosis, and we're going to use that money that we raised with entry fees to fund riders to get them started, for them to raise money for their ride. That's pretty much it in a nutshell, so we're excited about that and hope to have your support. We're already working with Parks and Rec and the school system on a place to start and everything. And it'll be the same weekend as Pecosin's White House Marina's open house weekend, which we're going to finish up there, and they've opened the doors for us to come down there and enjoy their activities also, so.
Great.
Very excited about it, so.
Hey, look forward to it.
Getting some outsiders to come out here and tour Pecosin, we're excited about that.
We like that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Too. Great. Okay, that's it for special presentations, and now it's time for the audience for visitors. And this is a time to address council on any subject. We do have two public hearings, one on the capital improvements plan and one on another plan to the zoning ordinance to change the violations, infractions, and civil penalties. If you're here to speak for either one of those, please refrain, hold your comments until we introduce those subjects. But is there anybody that would like to address council on other subjects? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular session of March the 9th, 2015.
Second. Motion made in second that we do the approval of minutes, regular session, March 9th. Questions or comments, the council? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
I was not present, but viewed it on TV and read the minute, so it makes me legal to vote.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and the work session?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the work session of March 9th, 2015.
Second. Okay, motion made in second that we approve those also. Questions or comments? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Now, to the section on public hearings, the first is the capital improvements plan for fiscal years 2016 through 2020 and beyond. And we just had a work session on this. Randy, is there a brief presentation associated with this?
I would be pleased to do one if you'd like, Mayor.
I think at just a high level, very similar to what we just went through at the work session, in case people did not see that, or however you all want to proceed, at a very high level.
I would be pleased to. The capital improvements plan is the capital improvement planning document that comes to us from the Planning Commission for the next upcoming five fiscal years and beyond. The five years being where the most significant financial attention is spent, but out-year projects are there as well. The first year is fiscally constrained, what we actually think we may be able to afford. The intervening years are a little bit more flexible in terms of weighing need with availability of funds. It gets more restrictive as you get closer to year one. The plan essentially addresses capital maintenance, capital equipment, renovation, replacement, new programs such as our projects, such as the With Creek Road widening project, renovations such as the middle school project, and sort of all things in between. It covers public safety, equipment replacement, again, capital maintenance, things like roofs and air conditioners of a significant size, as well as things like new parks and breakwaters and projects like that. Overall, the first five years of the budget, or excuse me, of the project, the total amount of the projection is $26.6 million. Again, by adopting this, you give some sense of where you are in year one. Everything beyond that is a planning document, as is year one, which is ultimately approved in your budget in a couple of months. But essentially, it's real heavy on equipment replacement and capital maintenance and required things, like the mandates from the federal government relating to stormwater, and also reflects the street work that we do with the money that the state provides us in the With Creek Road project. Beyond that, not a whole lot of glamour to it. One of the most important and partially unanswered questions is, as you were briefed by the superintendent, what to do with regard to the middle school. Those deliberations are ongoing. At the same time, the school system is eagerly watching and trying to predict changes in school enrollment. As I think I can paraphrase Dr. Parrish to say that we're on a path towards consolidation in a couple of years potentially, if that path doesn't change. And she gave you a detailed brief in the work session. We're here to answer any questions you may have. And Ms. Green, we do have the answer to your question probably in public hearing.
Okay. Counsel, is that good enough? Is it? All right, so I'll open the public hearing, and this is a public hearing to discuss the capital improvements plan for fiscal years 2016 through 2020 and beyond. And if you're here to talk on that subject, now is that time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution adopting the five-year capital improvements plan for the city of Pecosin for fiscal years 2016 through fiscal year 2020 and beyond.
Second. Okay, motion made in second is that we approve the capital improvements plan. Questions or comments of city council?
If there are spelling errors, is now the time to correct them, or can we get it off?
I think simple spelling errors are, we can take care of after the.
Okay, I'll go ahead and hand that in. I do want to mention on page 34, I think it is, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Program. We have, let me get to the next page, sorry. We have listed line item based on, the project number and title is the Row and Sidewalk In the description, the last sentence says that the results of the application are unknown and pending city submittal and EDOT's decision. I would like to encourage the city manager to make sure that that application gets submitted and we can move forward with that program.
Mr. Mayor, we have been waiting for city council directions since you may recall a work session a couple of years ago. If the city council would like us to put forward a grant application in its behalf, all we really need is to know that and to know specifically which area you would like that grant to reflect.
Okay. Let me answer your question.
It does, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, I have just one, and I mentioned this, and I apologize to those that think that I just harped too much on this particular subject, but it's one that sticks in my craw. And I just wanted everybody to understand what this capital improvement plan will do and not do. I think near term, we're in good shape. We're going to buy some bus replacements in the next year, potentially dump truck and look at a lease purchase. That's what we talked about in the work session prior to that. There's one line item in here that I constantly talk about, our priorities. Our priorities as citizens of the United States, our priorities as Virginians, and our priorities as far as local government. I will tell you that local government, and I think I speak for every council member here, believes that money is best spent on things that we can see returns for. Local government touches the people at the closest level. Those include schools, public safety, and local transportation projects. One item that's in here that I believe that everybody needs to understand, how big this is, I think, is TMDL. And TMDL is a federally mandated, state-therefore mandated project that will spend about $20 million, $20 million in the city of Pecosin over the next four to five years. I think that money is much better spent on other programs, on other priorities, but the city will march the drum to the word of law that we are passed down. All I would ask is that you become engaged with your federal and your state representatives, because this body does not want to spend $20 million on total maximum daily loading or controlling runoff from a flat-bodied, a flat plain area into the Chesapeake Bay when we are a city that is far beyond our neighbors as far as where we are in public sewer and protection of the bay. But we will do that, but always remember, when you keep seeing those tax dollars, when you keep saying about your taxes are too high, this is something that will impact you, just like building a brand-new school. It's about the same price as a new school, okay? And it's important to draw that distinction so that everybody knows what they're paying for and not paying for. So again, I'll get off my soapbox. I talked about it in the work session. I won't talk about it now for another year, but I'm off my soapbox, and we have a motion made, seconded, that we approve this, and I'm ready to proceed with a vote, so Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, the second public hearing this evening is in ordinance, and this is an ordinance on Article 17, Section 17.17-3 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to violations, infractions, and civil penalties. Brief introduction with us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and Mr. Wheeler. Over the past several months, it's been brought to staff's attention through the advisement of the city attorney that our fees or fines for zoning violations are not in alignment with state code. And I say alignment because they're technically in conformance with state code, as we are not at the maximum fees that they provide us to impose. Presently, within the city, we can collect $150 each day for a first violation of the zoning ordinance to accumulate up to $3,000 total for that violation. State code allows us to collect $200 a day for the first offense, up to $5,000 total. So the ordinance amendment before you this evening would bring those into alignment with state code. Our $150 would rise to 200, our $3,000 would rise to 5,000. Additionally, as a part of this proposed amendment, are three minor sections taken verbatim from state code that cover three minor sections. The first would allow the city to prosecute any violation that meets or exceeds $5,000, the maximum, to be prosecuted as a criminal misdemeanor instead of a civil penalty. Secondly, we are incorporating language that the state actually regulates the judicial process, violations that get into judicial proceedings, that the court may order an abatement period not to exceed six months. After that six-month timeframe, or whatever the court order abatement period is, maybe three months, what have you, we can collect fines for each day after that fact. And lastly, just a minor amendment, a minor addition, that states that any land disturbance activities or sign violations are exempt from this section. Those are regulated by our signed ordinance and other various ordinances, the site plan ordinance and the subdivision ordinance respectively. So with that being said, I can answer any questions. The Planning Commission did meet on this last Monday and recommended it to you all for approval by a vote of six to zero. Yes, sir?
Roughly just average number, run-of-the-mill, how many violations do we have in, you know, some time period? Do we have like, you know, two or three a day, or one a month, or what?
We have, without getting into hard numbers, because I couldn't give you an accurate number there, very few violations of our ordinance get to the point of fine collection. Our process is usually sending a notice of violation, and at that point, it's abated. Really, repeat offenders get into the judicial process, and that's when we start collecting fees. So with that being said, as far as violations and a whole number, multiple a week we process.
I was just wanting to look to see if this was a big problem that we needed to raise the fines for, or if it's just, you know, minor, normal business. That was the basis of my question.
Yes.
This is zoning administrator, I'll amplify Kevin's answer. Most inadvertent or first-time zoning violations are handled with a site visit, a phone call, or a letter, and they are quickly addressed, as you would hope they would be. You're also aware that there are a small number of occasions where we go through a protracted period, and sometimes the legal fees associated with that can be significant, the court-related legal fees, simply because at some point, we, after giving the two-week letter, and we begin that process, and we hope to never get there, our goal is never to collect a dollar in fines, it's just to have the zoning ordinance be applied with. But on those occasions where we go forward, legal costs would be closer to the max in the proposed than in current.
So we're barely breaking even, even with the higher rate, is what you're saying?
That would be correct. And of course, our intention is not to make any money at all, but to recoup our costs ultimately, when we have costs. And hopefully, we don't. Again, most violations are resolved with a site visit, or a phone call, or a letter.
Other questions, council, before we move to public hearing?
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
All right, I will open the public hearing on this ordinance change, and again, this is to increase the fines for violations, infractions, and civil penalties. If you'd like to speak on this subject, now is that time. Okay, seeing none.